Here. John here, Sarah. Sarah, I see her up there. Sarah, can you hear us? You're muted. Can't really do anything to them.
Well, she left, maybe she had bad.
Yeah. Tech issue. Okay, we're just gonna sit here until Sarah comes back. There she is. Sarah, can you hear us now? Still on mute. Can you message her from that?
I'll send her the link.
Chat to her.
Ask them to unmute.
Do you have to grant her that?
Mm-hmm. It was keep asking her to. Sarah, are you there?
I can't hear anything she says.
Can Dave hear?
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, call the committee order. May, John, both here, you hear me?
I hear.
Okay, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Inte the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Sarah, when I do a motion, I'm gonna call each person, 'cause we've only got three.
Okay.
So I need a motion for the consent agenda.
I motion to consent the agenda.
The motion is second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
May? Aye. Time for public input. This is a time, place. For discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. All right? Discussion possible action on Highway thirty we servicing. Dave? Dave, you're up.
Yes, I'm here. We need to set the public hearing date, and we also need to set the bid date for this item. So recommending is that, uh, set the public hearing on five twenty-four. And we open bids on five twenty, so that we can act on those on five twenty-four.
Motion to set the hearing for five twenty-four, as Dave suggested.
I second.
The motion is second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
May? Aye. And those will go out to bid right now?
Yes, I think we're just finishing things up. We get, uh, final review on those, and we can get those sent out next week.
All right, sounds good, thanks Dave.
Thank you.
Discussion possible action on temporary lighting and permanent lighting of the city park diamonds.
All right, so you'll see the, the email string, first off, with insurance, who's, uh, letting us know they will cover the lights. I didn't wanna run into a situation of getting a electrician here to temporarily fix what we had to get it going. So I went with the, the Musco Lighting Company. And they're approved to pay fourteen thousand sixty dollars. Uh, it'll be a three-month round. And, uh, probably have it here sometime after May ninth. And it'll be here through the end of baseball, softball, and sauerkraut days.
This is, this is gonna be a pretty big truck sitting there. Just so you guys are understanding, just the position. Just the position.
Yeah, said it was brought in with a, uh, over the road fork or off-road fork.
Yeah, there'll actually be a standalone walkout.
Outway.
Okay, all right. The crane, they need a crane that's to get it in there.
So, um, we'll do temporary lighting this year, then what are we doing for permanent lighting?
So I have, I have two bids. One bid was through the original company, uh, we reached out to through the electrician that, uh, met with us originally. Travis and I also met with Musco. And, um, I think probably the plan would be to proceed with the Musco plan. We can get new, uh, for about the same amount of money, so it won't be, it could be even less.
New lights, new poles?
New lights, new poles, new everything, twenty-five-year warranty, bumper to bumper. So, that's where, that'll be coming up, um, as we go, but there's no way to get it done before the season based on one thing, steel, and, um, the light fixtures take so long, so many weeks to order, so, um, that'll be in a coming meeting, we'll have to discuss that, but...
Could we, um, do this sooner than later, so we can get bids locked in? 'Cause I know stomach will get cheaper.
No, we're, yeah, well, uh, I'm gonna meet with them, uh... Well, when I get the approval with Robin, um, who's from Musco, I'll talk to her about, um, getting us the hard, hard quote numbers. We're still kinda going back and forth on a couple different things. They were trying to potentially look at lighting the upper field, which would be diamond one for regulation, which I, I think is a little bit overkill, so I think we can cut back on a pole. And would get us the same amount of lighting, if not even a little better, without the additional pole, which will save a little bit of money. So then, once we get that locked in, they'll send us the quote, but that's, we're in talks, and we, we have the dollar amount, what we're throwing around right now, so, yeah, as soon as we can, we can get the green light, we'll, we'll lock that in.
So do I need, do I, do I need a motion for?
Yeah.
The motion for Musco bid?
Uh, whenever it was.
Which is fully covered by insurance?
Fully covered. This is the outside of what they've already approved in replacement, so this is over.
That was my, that was my question, is this, is this covered by insurance? So it is fully covered by insurance?
Yep, and you'll see the email track there that
Okay.
Tony from EMC said, "Go ahead with the, move forward with it."
Okay, well, I make the motion to proceed with the rental of the, the truck
I'll second.
From Musco.
The motion is second. John?
Aye.
May? Aye. Sarah?
Aye.
Uh, discussion possible action on extending the application deadline for downtown reinvestment grant.
So the, the downtown reinvestment grant, um, I believe there's twenty thousand dollars there, I wanna say. Um, no, no applications were submitted, and they were due on April first. So, um, they would like to extend the deadline to June first. And I was gonna, I have a, another thing I have to hand out to some of the businesses, reference, um, CDG, so I can also mention about that when I hand them that flyer.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm sure a lot of these businesses down there don't even know it yet. 'Cause it seems like the same businesses always gets, get a credit.
Correct. It's my understanding, this, this, um, selection process is actually for the next fiscal year, so...
Yeah, it says twenty-two.
Yeah, so it's not like, uh, you know, we, we're early in the, in the game yet, so it wouldn't be a problem extending.
I'll move to approve. The motion to approve are second.
I'll second.
Motion is second. John?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Discussion possible action on approving payment for completion of B Elizabeth grant requirements.
So this was a late addition after the package went out. That's the packet you have in front of you with the turtle on it. And, um, this was a five thousand dollar grant, and you can see all the attached documents there. I believe there's a letter... You have the letter in here?
Only thing I saw was what was printed on the very front with the turtle.
Okay, yeah, maybe that's, okay, yeah, it's on the front, I'm sorry. So it's the five thousand, um, and then all the receipts are attached underneath it, so...
I think we've already approved us on one?
I know we have.
Yeah, they just have to get the work done and then provide the receipts, and then, we did the last one with Michelle at Salon Thirty, who was last meeting her, so...
I'll move to approve. The motion?
Second.
Second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
May? Aye. Set public hearing for changes to golf cart ordinance.
So we had the first, uh, meeting of the police board, and, um, really good discussion about this, and we decided to keep it two separate ordinances. And regardless if Mount Vernon passes theirs or not, uh, there were some changes that we need to make to incorporate Business Thirty and a couple different things, so, I'm gonna be sending this out to you all.
I gave them all a copy of it.
Okay. So, um, that way, if there's some other things you'd like to look at and add, uh, we can do so when we have, um, our public hearing and our first reading. So I would like to set that for, um,
Five ten.
The second meeting in May, I think this is the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
One thing I'd like, I don't know how, how we're gonna do it, though, is get it out there, that, let them know that they gotta be licensed, and how much fines they're gonna be, I mean, 'cause, and, you know, and it says they gotta be eighteen years old. I mean, I see kids a lot younger than eighteen.
Um, that, so that was kind of the topic of the discussion. I think, you know, there was a question on sixteen to eighteen. I think the, we agreed keeping it at eighteen. And then we also did some changes to, on the ordinance to incorporate, um, number of persons on a cart. Doug, was it three in the front?
Yeah, a bench seat with a comedy three. So basically, each have to have their own seat, no lap setting, stuff like that.
So you wouldn't have any kids hanging off, I guess it was, they had
Standing on the back or anything.
Somebody had complained about that, or mentioned something about seeing that, so, um, that was addressed. We're also gonna, um, look at passing by resolution, um, exemptions, a win, we can have them tonight, like if it was Elizabeth Sporting Events, sauerkraut days, that type of stuff, where we would allow them up to a certain time and be passed by resolution.
And then, with headlights?
Yes.
Oh, with headlights?
Yeah, the exemption would be with headlights.
All right.
Yeah, I think all car, I think all golf carts, it, for, I'm, uh, my daughter's, why, I'm just starting with anything up right now, but correct me if I'm wrong, they have to have headlights anyways, so, in order to have a golf cart, correct? If I'm not correct.
Well, we, we actually looked at this today, Sarah, and I was under that assumption as well. But technically, it says, "Equipped with adequate, adequate brakes, and shall be equipped with brake lights." So taillights and headlights are not part of the ordinance, which I thought it was.
I thought it was, you know, I guess I was mistaken, but I, like I said, I don't have anything up right now, 'cause I'm on my phone, so I, I didn't know for sure, and I didn't wanna miss vote, speak, that's why I asked for clarification, so... I should have said a little bit more.
We're going to honor each other's
Yep, that was a, that was the hope. Um, Mount Vernon said to have their public hearing on the tenth?
I believe for the fourth.
Third?
Third, third.
Third. Um, so, um, yeah, we, the hope was to have one sticker, again, like we said, they, we pay here, they pay there. Each, each cart, the cart can go back and forth to each town. Uh, one thing, though, to think about, and it's really not a big deal, because you're getting the money anyway. I would probably, at some point, they, they would like to see the January, or December thirty-first, it'd be a calendar year, um, license. So we'd start January of, uh, twenty twenty-two with the new sticker. Um, one thing is, we'll probably have to give leniency unless you wanna charge people twice. 'Cause ours are gonna expire in June, so through the end of, at least the calendar year, nobody would have a sticker, but you're still getting that money within that fiscal year. Whether you get it July one or, or January one, and still, you're still getting it, there's no, no money missing. Or we can charge it twice, but it's something we're gonna have to, or figure out a happy medium, but it's something to think about.
If I remember this right, you gotta be eighteen to drive one, even if you're with parents?
It's the way the codes we're on right now.
Yep.
Yes, way, pretty much, yes, you do.
And I think the one thing we were going to add is, um, having mirrors, at least either a side mirror or a rear view mirror, we're gonna add.
Yeah, I guess correct, Brandon. That's what was discussed.
And again, I can send the amended, um, from the meeting, what we decided. I can send that out to everybody. And you can make some comments on there and bounce them back and forth with me, and, uh, if we set the public hearing for the twenty-fourth, we can also have the resident do the first reading, and then July one will essentially have to take it back.
I, I, I just have a problem with eighteen. I mean, you know, we're, sixteen, we'll let them drive a truck, a car, or anything, it's, you know, you know, in the cities. But then, you make, they can't drive a golf cart at eighteen, until they're eighteen.
I think, Doug, what we have talked about in the advisory board meeting is that I think we all get that, and it's kind of confusing, but when you look at it, I think that golf carts are easier to roll than a vehicle. They're, and insurance factors and things like that, it just makes more sense to keep it at eighteen. That was my personal, I, I asked the same question, 'cause I felt the same way, but the more I thought about it, the more I was like, hmm. Yeah, I, I think the eighteen, the maturity level is a little bit more, you know, the level is just a little bit more, I guess, that's how I feel.
Yeah, I, I don't think we wanna treat these golf carts as toys for teenagers.
But I mean, you can, you can get your motorcycle license at sixteen, though. I mean,
What's that?
You can get a motorcycle license at sixteen, though, also.
Yeah, but you also have to have a motorcycle license. They don't give license for golf carts. You have to take a special course for motorcycles for safety, and that's the difference.
Yeah, our discussion around that
Again, that's my personal.
Yeah, our discussion, we had kind of lengthy discussion about this exact topic as well. My research through some of the ordinances across the state, um, they're fairly split. Most, a lot of them are eighteen. There's a few of them that are sixteen that'll allow that to go through. You know, drivers, a licensed driver. One thing you gotta think about, too, with a golf cart or a UTV, there may or may not be seatbelts. Other safety devices that come in a vehicle where you're required to do that in a car and stuff like that, so... It's truly a council decision, I think, at this standpoint, and I think we also have to look back at the state code, but I think the state code references eighteen on some of that, too, so I'd have to look back and see.
It's eighteen with a driver's license, right?
Right, yeah, they have to be a licensed driver regardless, absolutely, so they'd have to have an I with driver's license. Which means they've been to the driver's ed portion, but, like, there's, you know, the vehicle's got a lot more safety features than a golf cart does, obviously, and I think there was concerns about a sixteen-year-old loading up a cart full of kids. And, and going from that standpoint, um, with no adult, maybe even no adult knowledge, um, that they were driving that, too, so... I think the other thing we talked about, too, was, uh, at sixteen, you know, you got a fifteen-year-old that might have a birthday a month, saying, oh, I'm a month away, you know? But then you got a fifteen-year-old on the road versus, you know, the eighteen-year-old, you got seventeen-year-old, so, it was just kind of, that was another topic that was brought up about that.
I, I don't know, how, how do we, um... They, they gotta be insured, do, when they come down to get their tag, do they gotta provide true, proof, proof of insurance then?
Yes.
And basically, what they're doing right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, I've only seen this a couple times, but we're, the cities are grabbing the permit application. And then they turn that over to the police department. They have to submit their insurance when they fill out the application, and then that's turned over to us, we go do an inspection on the utility vehicle or the golf cart. Making sure that it meets all the requirements, and the identified drivers are insured under to operate that vehicle. So it'd be interesting to see, too, with their insurance carriers, you know, how they're gonna react to the eighteen versus sixteen conversation as operators.
I, um, you know, hopefully, Mount Vernon passes this. Maybe we can just get together as one and just do like one sticker.
That's the plan.
Yeah, that's the plan.
And I
We're controlling our own
Yeah, we can start getting by the stickers here.
Kind of, even kind of feeding off Brandon's. I mean, if you've got the current sticker this year, and we renew that, we can recognize that sticker until January first. That's an easy, just keep the same sticker on it till, let's keep that one balanced, it's January first, January first. If, if Mount Vernon passes it, we'll roll out one sticker for both cities. Um, each city will still be responsible for issuing and, and kind of go in collecting the fees and stuff for their own, but would be one sticker, they can go back and forth.
Any other questions?
Uh, I just have a comment. Um, we, you, you mentioned that, uh, to be permitted from July through December if we start a January, um, renewal. Uh, do, or do we wanna consider a half-price permit cost for this year?
Yeah, s- something I think would be just, I mean,
I would say, I'd say, I'd say, wait a minute, so I thought, no, January first, that's what we're doing, it's going from January to December.
Yeah, I'm, I'm cool either way.
Well, I, we're gonna give you six months, but, you know.
Yeah, I'm, something to at least
If they're not permitted, it's the full fee, but if they are permitted
Yeah, after saying that, I think it's still important to get the sticker, because then we know that they've done the paperwork, they've
We, we can also collect the twenty, the full fee, and just make it good for a year and a half
Right.
On that same thing, so that they're at least licensed and have the sticker.
That's what I was gonna say, I said, as fast as we can get the sticker, once it holds out, these people will be in, they've already been in wanting this year's sticker. So they'll come in and buy that one.
I don't think it's, this one, or it expires December.
If we issue, I mean, if we issue them a twenty twenty-two sticker right now, and they're driving around with it, we know they're good until, till the entire calendar year of twenty twenty-two, and now, that'll be easy. Yeah. One thing we've done is made a list, and I had Marcia make the list, so we're not accepting money until we figure this out.
Okay.
So that way, you know, somebody's not gonna not benefit or, you know, refund, refund it, or whatever the case may be.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you guys for working on this.
Oh, you're welcome.
Who's the lead motion?
Um, just to let you guys know, you may lose me here in a couple minutes. My daughter's going onstage here in just a few minutes, so I wanna make sure I get through this next resolution if
Yep.
We need to.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearings for five twenty-four.
The motion, motion is second.
I second.
Okay. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Resolution seventeen twenty-one, approving hire, the part-time cleaning positions for library.
Motion to approve the hire.
The motion is, are you second?
Second.
Motion is second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Goodbye, Sarah.
Thank you, guys. I don't have any comments. I was just gonna talk about advisory board, what we kind of talked about, all of that. There was a few more other things that we talked about, but have a good night, you guys. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. City engineer reports. Dave, you got anything else?
Uh, the only things that I have would be the, uh, grants that we're pursuing, the CDG grant, uh, it sounds like the income survey is ready to go out, if it hasn't already. And then we are waiting yet to hear back from YTT on the crockery fields for the well site, and hope to have that here shortly. Happy note of them after the last meeting, man, you get in there working on finishing up the plans, and we get those to us as soon as they're done.
You okay?
Public board director, can I ask? Um, we're gonna start sludge removal, so it'll be some semis coming in and out of the sewer plant. So, coming out of thirty, just telling people to relax. Christina put it on next week, and Facebook tomorrow. Just to let everybody know that we'll be having heavy truck coming in and out of there for the next couple days. Um, and then just, we're gonna get, uh, the rest of the waters turned on, but just wanna let everybody know our drinking problems won't be on until we start relaxing on the, the mask mandate throughout the town. As long as you guys are okay with that, that's what Brandon and I kind of talked about, and so, seems like that's the consensus on everybody I talked to for all the towns, so, anybody ask you guys why those aren't on, that's, that's why.
Good. Person, person rector after report.
Um, just that, uh, park cleanup was a success, and Great and I and Rod Kelly from the school walked the park last week. And, uh, it's all ready for the transfer, so, May first, it'll be, it'll be there.
Police department report.
Nothing new, there wasn't a report.
Why aren't you reporting?
I do not have anything.
City administrator report.
Um, still making progress on the drashio, um, still working with insurance. As I told you before, we're, uh, keep looking away at that. I think we've had six to ten more trees that came down that we side worked on. Uh, we found another little, what I call it, no man's land, but in urban, that's ours, that's got probably twenty trees in there that we'll have to turn in. But we're just slowly making progress with that. Once everything settles down here, we'll start going around and getting our sign inventory, what we need from new signs, 'cause that's covered as well that I didn't turn in. I met on a Zoom meeting with, uh, a gal from JEO Consulting, who works with the Iowa DNR, referenced a tree report. Apparently, you guys approved this tree report to be done prior to drashio. So, we now need to, Travis and I will have to go around and see what applies and what doesn't, but, um, there was some good stuff in there. Um, one thing, she requested no more maple trees and no more apple tree species to be planted, because we're over that percentage of threshold throughout the city. So she's sending me a list, and actually, I got them tonight, like at five thirty, of different species, and how the heights of them are, and how they'll affect, and what are good for, uh, right-ofways, and what are good for yards. Um, she said with the apple and the maple, in time, if you have that species and you get another critter similar to the, uh, ash wood, then you may have an issue where you gotta take all of them down, so they like to see it spread out, so...
Ash would be on that list, too, though.
Yeah, correct, yeah, we wouldn't have ash. Um, she actually said we're doing pretty good prior to drashio. I can't remember the exact number. I wanna say it was like forty trees that needed to come down, and lord only knows, hopefully, those all actually did come down, and still don't want to worry about it, but uh, once we get things settled down here, we'll, we'll take a drive and see what's up. They actually pinpointing the GPS locations on a map for us, so we'll be able to find, find out. As, uh, Dave talked about, the income survey, um, should be out in the next day or two. It's very important for the residents that get those, uh, to fill those out. Drop them in the water, they'll drop, or at the front desk. It is confidential, so you can, you don't have to put your name on it. Um, just, just drop it off in an envelope, and, um, hopefully, we can get that grant, uh, to help with that water project, so... Um, then the last thing, um, the economic vitality committee through CDG locally here, uh, had a meeting last week, and the flyer that I was telling you I was gonna pass out to the businesses is a program called the Deeds Program, which is an app. Basically, it's, uh, kind of free advertising for local businesses to put their daily specials, or weekly specials, or monthly specials, or whatever they're doing, onto this app. Um, if the public don't, uh, download the app, they can pull it right up there. I know that there's several people in town that search Facebook sites for lunch specials and all different kinds of places, uh, different things for daily specials, but this app will have all of that. It's a free service provided for, is it one year, John?
One year, uh, CDG is paying the five thousand dollars for it, so no expense to the business owner. And it also applies for, like, the city, Southeastland, and other nonprofits can participate, too.
So the big thing is getting the businesses to put their information out there, and then also the public to download the app and utilize it, so... I'm gonna be going downtown and, uh, handing those out to each of the businesses, and hopefully, uh, we already have something on the site, city site, to, uh, tell the public to sign up for that. I think that's it. Let's see, are there questions or comments?
All right, I'll do council report.
Let's go first.
John, you go first. Johnny, go first.
As of last Tuesday, anyway, the Southeastland had monies to help low-income people with things like pool passes, uh, park and rec, uh, program, and the Leicester Burridge Center memberships for three months. And they'll pay anywhere from, uh, fifty percent to eighty percent while the money lasts. And some of those programs may have been filled already. They may take names on a waiting list, but that depends on whether they get any more donations for those programs. If you're already getting, uh, food stamps or, uh, low or reduced lunches at school, you'll probably qualify for this program too, so. First come, first served, though. That's all I have.
I don't have anything tonight.
I did, I did go to the track meet, the school had, but I drove by. Wow, there was a lot of people there.
Yeah.
That looked awesome. Um, pool, they're gonna be open this year.
I'm assuming so.
Yep.
Unless you guys tell me no.
More day?
Yeah, well, it'd be the, the Tuesday after.
When, whatever. Um, and then also, like, right across the street from you, I think there might be a tree that, that, where you can kind of watch. It'd be like the second tree.
Yeah, there's a couple of them we're watching. Really hoping they can hang on until we get that, uh, chipper.
Is it in that, uh?
At Montgomery?
No, it's, it's like, it's in the park.
Yeah.
It's like the second one in.
I planned the two at Montgomery, so. I invested in.
Yeah, pretty partial to those.
It looks like the grass took off in the park, so.
Hey, I made sure, uh, I made sure the drain went out this morning and watered it, cause I knew it was gonna get warmer today, and so, we're gonna keep the rope up through soccer. Then when he takes down the nets, I think it's the fourth or the fifth, um, then we'll take down the rope and kind of is what it is at that point, but it looks a lot better than it did in the next row.
And that's all I got. Can bring any, anything else?
Uh, the trees on Gillette Lane, we'll probably need to look at those sometime. Some of them, a couple of them are dead, I think, for last year.
Once they moved across the street?
Some of them, they moved directly across the street and it wasn't where, the city didn't get an opportunity to tell the, the contractor where to put them, and so some of them are too close to light holes, too close to corner and things like that, so. Sometime we'll have to talk about moving some of them. That's all I have.
Alright. Adrian?